Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting for Haverford Township on Monday, February 12, 2024. It's approximately 7:00 p.m. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
President.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Chief? I do have an announcement. Our board met in executive session prior to today's meeting, as well as met in executive session prior to last week's work session to discuss legal and real estate matters. Next item on our agenda is a proclamation that I would like to present. I asked specifically if I could do this because of my longtime relationship with the honoree of this proclamation, so, excuse me. So if I could ask Ed McGargy to come up here and stand next to me. For anybody in the Sixth Ward who voted for the last 20 years, this is not an unusual sight, Ed and I standing next to one another. The only thing that would make it more typical would be is if you had five buttons on, I had five buttons on, and none of them matched. And that should give you an idea, I hope, about what cooperation really is all about and what governing and serving is all about, even when you may have some, you know, some differences. You may belong to different parties, you may have different ideas of how things go, but you meet somebody every once in a while who cares more than anything about service, service to their neighbors, service to their township, service to their fellow voters, and service to people in the county, in Delaware County. And tonight, we have a chance to herald one of our citizens and a member of the Sixth Ward for his service, not only to our township and to his neighbors, but for Delaware County. So if I may, I would like to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, wish to recognize and honor a longtime Haverford Township resident, Haverford Township zoning hearing board member of 18 years, and Delaware County Conservation District Manager, Ed McGargy, for receiving the 2024 Delaware County Chapter of the Pennsylvania Society of Professional Engineers Lifetime Achievement Award. And whereas members of the Delaware County Chapter of the Pennsylvania Society of Professional Engineers Award Selection Committee unanimously selected Ed as this year's recipient, recognizing him as, quote, "the one person that has impacted the quality of life more than anyone in Delaware County." And whereas, for more than four decades, Ed has applied his technical expertise and skills as a Conservation District Manager, working to enhance human welfare by furthering the mission of the Conservation District. This mission revolves around ensuring the wise use of the county's natural resources and protecting and restoring the natural environment through the conservation of soil, water, and related resources. Throughout his career, Ed has steadfastly demonstrated a commitment to prioritizing service over personal interests. And whereas Ed resides in Haverford Township with his wife Carol and his two daughters, Ed is actively involved in the community as a member of his local civic association, and for almost two decades, as an appointed member of the Haverford Township zoning hearing board, contributing his time and knowledge for the improvement of our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, does hereby congratulate Ed McGargy for earning the distinguished 2024 Delaware County Chapter of the Pennsylvania Society of Professional Engineers Lifetime Achievement Award, and offers our deep appreciation for his countless contributions to our township and our county. Thank you. Thank you again, Lyndon. I appreciate it. Ah, here we go. All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ed. The next item on our agenda is another proclamation, recognizing and celebrating Black History Month. Commissioner Trombetta?
Mr. President, thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce this proclamation, recognizing and celebrating the month of February as Black History Month. Special thanks to Gloria Cugini and the township and Commissioner Cavender for their assistance with preparing this. Whereas the contributions of African-American citizens, as scientists, inventors, farmers, educators, homemakers, explorers, civil rights leaders, and public servants, including President and Vice President of the United States, in addition to countless other professions, have greatly benefited our nation. And whereas, the Black community in Haverford Township holds profound significance, contributing not only to the township's historical fabric, but also playing a pivotal role in shaping its diverse and vibrant identity. Through resilience, perseverance, and meaningful contributions, the Black community has become an integral part of Haverford Township's narrative. And whereas, from the foundational years when African-Americans worked as enslaved people on plantations and settlements in Haverford, to the present day, their presence and achievements have played a crucial role in Haverford Township. The narrative of the Black community through Haverford's 300-year, throughout Haverford's 300-year history underscores the importance of our diverse history and highlights an enduring impact on the community's cultural, social, and economic rope. And whereas, Dr. Carter G. Woodson first initiated the recognition of African-Americans in 1926, when Dr. Woodson set aside a special period in February to recognize the heritage and achievement of African-Americans of the United States. And whereas, Black History Month was officially recognized in the United States in 1976 as part of the bicentennial celebration when President Gerald Ford urged Americans to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas, since 1976, Black History Month has continued to be a month-long celebration of African-American history and accomplishments in the United States. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Township of Haverford, Delaware County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, does hereby celebrate the month of February as Black History Month and recognizes the contributions of the Black community to our township, our Commonwealth, and our nation, and encourages all its citizens to increase their awareness and understanding of these contributions, resolved this 12th day of February.
You're here. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. We are now, next item on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. We have 20 minutes for registered speaker and 20 minutes for anyone who would like to speak on the agenda item. And then, as folks may or may not recall, later in the meeting, we will return to the Citizens Forum for anyone who did not register to speak but would like to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Our first and only registered speaker this evening is Michael Brenner. Yes, Mr. Brenner, please, come forward. Good to see you again, Mr. Brenner.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm happy to have this opportunity to speak with you while this way. Want to say something about the Open Space Plan. Everyone who's contributed to it, I think should be proud. It's a remarkable, commendable work. And I think there's something missing. It reads as if everyone in the community is fully able-bodied, as if there's nobody who's held back by significant physical limitations or what we call neurodiversity now. And, you know, that's simply something that's just not there. You know, as we know, one measure of any community is how well it cares for its most vulnerable. The school district does a usually commendable job in this regard, but they're mandated to by law. No such obligation on the township, except for the ADA requirements for township buildings, but no requirements about the parks. So anything we do there in that direction of inclusivity and accessibility is from our own moral standards. So I'd like to propose that there be an addition to the plan, not, I don't see as a change, but that there be a provision for the identification of places where there are obstacles to accessibility that could be removed at modest expense, like a site where mulch could be replaced by resilient pads so that wheelchairs and walkers could have an easier time. Or a slope could be regraded. And to identify sites where adaptive sports installations, like one I've talked about here before, the bank shot basketball, could be located. So I hope to see an addition of that kind. If I can have any role in crafting it, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brenner. Mr. Brenner was our only registered speaker. I now invite anybody in the room who would like to speak on an agenda item this evening. I will, as always, start on my left. Yes, let me just, before I get there, first, second row.
Hi, Jamie Jalosian, I live at 203 Landover Road. I'm also had the privilege of being on the Park Recreation and Open Space Plan Committee, the steering committee, and I'm on the Parks Board. I do feel like this, over the past year and a half, this, this plan has really had a great amount of public input. They've done some great outreach. I think that the broad scope of it is at a 10,000-square-foot view of the township. I think some of the implementation can get at what Mr. Brenner is talking about. That being said, I think that the plan has done a really great job of providing an inventory of the plethora of amenities that are Parks, Recreation, and Open Space related in Haverford Township. I think that this gives a great blueprint for the next 10 years of the priorities that can, you know, help, with the help of the Park Board and with everybody else here, and with public input, kind of drive what our next steps are for maintenance and enhancements of your Parks, Recreation, and Open Space amenities, which I think are a driving force for why people choose to live in Haverford. I just wanted to share my support. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hall, I didn't mean to miss you. If you had anything that's more today?
Oh, no, that was a pass.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Kathy Case at 121 County Line Road. I just have a brief comment. We are, later in the agenda, you're appointing people to the Brinmar Playfield Association Board. However, in the agenda, it says representatives to the Brinmar Playfield Association, because this is a dicey legal issue. I think you have to be specific that you're appointing members of the Board of Directors, because only they can vote.
And nice to see you again, Ms. Case. Is there anybody else in that row who would like to speak? Anyone in the back row? Moving to my right, anybody here in the front? Anybody farther back? Anyone in the back row? Okay. I do have two letters to read. It was asked by constituents to present these comments. First, from Mr. Morinelli, Tony Morinelli, of Harford Hall here on Mill Road. He asked me to read this to the commissioners. With the current project along Caracong that is laying out a parking lot, or the P&amp;W, the township might do well to consider the need for a clear pedestrian walk along the drive. Drive is self-evidently precarious. Sharp curves are blind spots for pedestrians and for drivers. No small number of runners and walkers use the drive every day. There is, however, no clear and safe pedestrian path. While a portion of the drive on the east side has a trail, it is not particularly convenient and is not always evident, particularly in the summer when it is covered in growth. Few people use it. On the west side, it would be more than helpful to have a safe pathway around the sharp curves that lead to the pool and the baseball fields. Children would be far safer in their coming and going. While SEPTA and the state are joined to lay out the parking lot, it would likewise be important, especially for the preservation of our history, to take up the restoration of the Powder House, too long neglected. Sincerely yours, Mr. Morinelli. Thank you, Mr. Morinelli, for your comments. I am also reading comments from Michelle Alvery, who could not be here this evening, and has, has asked me to read my email at the, her email at the public forum. Michelle writes, "As a member of the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Planning Plan Steering Committee and the Parks and Recreation Board, I respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners approve the Park, Recreation, and Open Space Plan for Haverford Township. Many citizens of Haverford Township have provided their input into the process of preparing the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan over the course of the last year and a half, and the members of the Steering Committee have provided expertise and foresight into this plan for the betterment of Haverford Township. I truly believe that the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan is a very good guide for the future maintenance and provision of recreation and park facilities and programs for the residents of Haverford Township. Haverford Township has developed top-class recreation and park facilities and programs for over the, for the past 40-plus years, and the township should continue to maintain this level of service for the residents in the future. Haverford Township is a highly regarded town in which to live, and our Recreation and Park facilities and program are a major reason for that premier reputation. I strongly urge all members of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners to vote to approve the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan tonight for the benefit of all residents of Haverford Township. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Michelle Alvery." That concludes our Citizens Forum. Next item on our agenda is a Bureau of Fire update.
Just want to correct one thing in Mr. Morinelli's comments. The parking lot at Mill and Caracong is not being paid for by SEPTA. It's really a grant from DVR BC and Township Fund, so SEPTA is letting us build a parking lot on their property to service their trains.
Thank you for that clarification.
I have the Bureau of Fire update, the Havertown Bureau of Fire report for January of 2024. Total number of incidences are 89. 69 were township instances, and 20 were out-of-t township mutual aid incidents. The average personnel per call was 19. We had 1,594 personnel hours committed to incidents and 855 personnel hours committed to training. The Bureau of Fire responded to one working fire within Haverford Township on January 2nd, 2024, at 19 Crescent Hill Drive, a first-floor fire, and we provided mutual aid to eight working fires within Delaware County.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondak. Next on the agenda, and we will brace ourselves, is the Township Auditor update. Mr. Anderson, welcome back.
Well, first and foremost, I have to say the NFL is rigged, but I don't mind because the Cowboys lose, so, yes. But I will say I have reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next item on our agenda is the Township Manager update.
Couple projects, updates. Pency Trail, they have just about completed the retaining walls down by the shopping center at the other end of the trail, and they're loading equipment and materials here at this end of the trail, where they'll be building the abutments and the retaining walls. So you'll see an awful lot of work going on for the next several weeks, right outside the township building, where the trail is going to go over Manoa Road. Library project, the interior demolition is ongoing, nearly complete, and they're moving into laying out and roughing in for the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing work. The property of number one Mill Road is currently being used as a laydown area. There will be office trailers, there will be materials and equipment stored there, and it will be fenced off and locked overnight. Derby Road Streetscape's Phase III project is going on as well, and that project is just getting underway, and it should take about three months to complete. The Mill and Caracong parking ride that Dr. Hart and Mr. Morinelli referenced is ongoing. That project is about two to three months from completion. There's a tree down at the Grange, we talked about it last month. It's actually about 62 inches in diameter, and so we're going to have a crane brought in this week, late this week, and they'll begin working to remove that tree from the lawn at the Grange. Finally, I think everybody knows that we're expecting a little bit of snow, and my request to the residents is, if you have driveways, please put your cars in your driveway so that it'll make the work easier for our Public Works crew to clear any snow that we get and to spread salt on the roadways. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Township Manager. Next item for our consideration, next item for our consideration is the approval of minutes for the reorganization meeting as well as the regular meeting in January.
I can, and the right, right, for regular meet, many minutes of Jan, of January 8th.
Second.
I do have an amendment to request for the minutes from January 2nd. In reviewing the minutes from January 2nd, I don't have page numbers on what I printed out, but apparently on the motion when we were appointing someone to the Human Relations Commission for a three-year term, there were two people appointed, and I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's names, but two people were nominated, Melissa Hobb and Jen Carrice. Apparently, this has me voting affirmatively for both of those candidates, which obviously I don't think can happen, so I would just ask the record to be amended to just reflect that I only voted once in that, in that, in that particular action was for Melissa Hobb.
I approve that.
Okay, the minutes as amended by Commissioner Gondak and approved by the person who moved them in, who seconded them?
I support that. Thank you.
All right, so the amended minutes are before us. Any other questions, comments, deletions, observations? Doc, anything? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Our next item for consideration is the approval of warrants.
Make a motion to approve warrants, general fund disbursements in the amount of $2,22,441.19, sewer fund disbursements in the amount of $214,974.93, community development block grant fund disbursements in the amount of $44,344.81, capital projects funds disbursement in the amount of $683,742.25, American Rescue Plan Fund in the amount of $83,265.05, general and sewer fund payroll for January 18, 2024, in the amount of $921,992.76, general and sewer fund payroll for February 1, 2024, in the amount of $786,748.37, credit card statement ending January 27, 2024, in the amount of $12,833.49.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments, additions or deletions to these warrants? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Our next item is the appointment of special counsel.
Make a, make a motion to appoint Jennifer W. Brown, Esquire of Eastburn and Gray, PC, Blue Bell, PA, to serve as Township Act 511 Special Counsel for any matters related to enforcement and administration of business privilege, mercantile, and local services tax at a rate of $250 per hour on an as-needed basis.
Second.
I have a question for clarification. Is this a board appointment, or are we approving the selection and recommendation of our staff? Anyone know?
It should be a board appointment.
Okay.
Based upon the recommendation of the staff, but it would be an appointment.
Okay. Right. And I have no changes to it. Any questions or comments on the appointment of Jennifer Brown, Esquire? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Now we are moving to ordinances. We have a number of ordinances to consider tonight, four of them. First ordinance for consideration is P-1 of 2024, mending Chapter 95 relating to recycling. Will I entertain a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-1 2024, mending and supplementing the general laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 95, Article 3 Recycling, Sections 95-23 and 95-25, by adding a definition of community event and requiring organizers to provide separate containers for and to collect recyclable materials.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments, deletions? This is the second reading. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Our next item, ordinance P-2 of 2024, this is also a second reading relating to traffic, a number of traffic restrictions we are establishing or rescinding. Yes, I make a mo-
Yes, I make a mo- motion to adopt the second re- reading of ordinance number P two twen- or twen- or twenty twenty-four, establishing and rescinding traffic restrictions on the fa- 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 following high, high, on the fa- fa- following highways. Parking time li- li- lim- limited to a sta- stab- establish on the west side of Austin from Bro- Brookline two, but not include, including twelve oh four Als- Austin Road. Fifteen minute parking from, from, or, uh, from eight AM to four Monday through, or, uh, through Friday. Rescind parking of all vehi- vehi- or, or, or vehicles prohibited at all times. East side of Austin Road from Brook- Brookline to Sat- Sat- Sagamore. West side of A- Austin Road from Brook- Brookline to a point thir- thir- thirty-five feet there, 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 thereof. Rescind spe- spe- special pur- purpose part parking zones on the west side of Austin Road approximately set, set, set seventy-five feet south of its intersect sag- sag- sag section with Brook- Brook- Brook, or, uh, with Brook- Brookline. Second.
We have a motion in a second, any questions or comments?
I'd like to, um, thank Sergeant Long and the Chief for all the work that, uh, they did to help with, um, the na- 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 neighbors over there who had, uh, uh, the issues, and as we discussed la- last month, there were issues wi- with, with this, so this has resolved all those, we hope. So, that's, um, that's it, and I don't think we'll have to discuss this more.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Um, does anybody else have any other questions or comments or, um, anything? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Um, next item on our agenda tonight, ordinance P three of twenty twenty-four, this is the Skadium Cafe Lease Renewal, this is a first reading.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance, uh, P three, two thousand twenty-four, authorizing a renewal lease agreement with Chef and Sons LLC doing business as Have a Burger, Essington, PA, for a portion of certain property located at ten eighteen Darby Road, the Skadium, Hav- Havertown, PA, subject to review by the Township Solicitor and further subject to the approval of the Township Manager of the final document.
Second.
We have a fir- we have a, uh, motion in a second, any questions or comments on this? I will personally vouch for how good those burgers are, especially after an hour of hockey. Um, Mr. Berman, will you call the round?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Um, our final ordinance for consideration tonight is ordinance number P four of twenty twenty-four, this is a first reading, it relates to traffic.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of Ordinance Number P four, twenty twenty-four, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Establish special purpose parking zones in front of twenty-four forty-seven Winfield Drive. Establish parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times. No parking here to corner the unit block of Colfax Road North Side from the corner of Darby Road to a point sixty feet west. Rescind permit parking only on Mifflin Avenue. Second.
We have a motion in a second, any questions or comments on this? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Um, next on our agenda are several resolutions for us to, for our consideration. First resolution is Resolution Number twenty-three sixty of twenty twenty-four, um, the subdivision and land development of fourteen Claremont Boulevard.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-three sixty, twenty twenty-four, approving the recommendations and findings of the Planning Commission are hereby adopted in the preliminary final land development plan for Caramanico Homes LLC, fourteen Claremont Boulevard, Haverford Township, Delaware County, dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, is approved, subject to compliance with the recommendations described here and above.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any questions, um, uh, additions or deletions relating to this resolution?
I have a question in regards to the fee in lieu of open space, do we need to add that to the motion if we want to? How does that work?
The, the, there is a requirement for to pay the fee in lieu, that fee in lieu has been calculated in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So it would be a condition, uh, of that approval that that fee be paid, and there is an agreement with the applicant that that is the calculated, uh, correct amount. So, in accordance with our code, there would be a fee of eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, uh, and, and compliance with all of our codes, including the SADO, that fee would also need to be paid.
Thank you.
And I assume therefore, since the resolution approves the recommendations and finding the planning commissions and those recommendations and finding include us taking that fee, that we don't have to do anything other than just adopt this resolution as is?
I, I believe that would be the case, uh, and there is the understanding, uh, based upon, uh, our code, that that fee would be paid, and it's in that amount.
Right.
Uh, just for clarification, again, at the Planning Commission meeting, they said it was our decision of paying a fee in lieu or that there would be open space at the site, so.
If, if there's a, if there is a, uh, question on that, then I'd recommend just, uh, adding an additional condition on to the approval of that that fee in lieu be paid, uh, in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Um, let me ask this, is there any recommendation or finding of the Planning Commission that we are not approving or adopting?
Yeah.
So, okay. Um, I don't think it hurts for us to add the language, including but not limited to the imposition of a fee in lieu of, um, uh, open space in the amount of eighty-four thirty-seven, but, um, I do think to the extent that the, um, I mean, they are right that we need to, that we need to act, but I think by acting in a way where we approve the recommendations and findings of the Planning Commission that includes something like that, that it would be included in that, but it's not a bad idea for us to, um, to, uh, detail it, who, um, who moved this resolution?
Or.
Make the-
Commissioner Cavender, no, do you accept, uh, would you accept a, a, an addition to the, um, motion as you, um, as you stated it with, uh, including the language, including, uh, after approving the recommendations and findings of the Planning Commission, um, including but not limited to the imposition of the fee in lieu of, uh, the dedication of open space, um, in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars?
Yes.
Who seconded this motion?
I did. Uh, I accept the amendment also.
You accept the amendment also, all right, we now have before us an amended resolution, any other questions or comments about that? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Um, next, uh, resolution for our consideration is Resolution Number twenty-three sixty-two of twenty twenty-four, this is, um, relates to the Police Department and the use of, of ARPA funds.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-three sixty-two, twenty twenty-four, approving the use of funds from the Township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the purchase of one twenty twenty-four Landmaster AMP Crew four-by-four electric ATV for a total of twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars and one cent.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any questions or comments on this, uh, resolution? Uh, hearing none, um, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Uh, next, uh, next resolution for our consideration is Resolution Number twenty-three sixty-three, twenty twenty-four. This is, uh, grant application relating to library construction.
Mr. President, I would like to move to adopt Resolution Number twenty-three sixty-three dash twenty twenty-four, approving that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford of Delaware County hereby acknowledges its support for an application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department, Department of Community and Economic Development, COVID-nineteen ARPA Capital Projects Fund Multipurpose Community Facilities Program in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to assist with the construction and technology outfitting of the Makers Space Innovation Zone to be located within the newly renovated Haverford Township Free Library. And the applicant does hereby designate David R. Berman, Township Manager, and Amy M. Cuthbertson, Assistant Township Manager, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the Township of Haverford and the Department of Community and Economic Development to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any questions or comments about this resolution? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Uh, and the next resolution for our consideration is Resolution twenty-three sixty-four of twenty twenty-four, this is a grant applic- uh, also a grant application for locker rooms in the Skadium.
Motion to adopt the Resolution Number twenty-three sixty-four of twenty twenty-four, approving that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford of Delaware County hereby acknowledges its support for an application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, COVID-nineteen ARPA Capital Projects Fund Multipurpose Community Facilities Program in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to assist with the space planning, construction and renovation of the locker rooms and related space of the Haverford Township Skadium and designating David R. Berman, Township Manager, and Amy M. Cuthbertson, Assistant Township Manager, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the Township of Haverford and the Department of Community and Economic Development to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next resolution for our consideration is twenty-three sixty-five of twenty twenty-four, this is the use of ARPA funds for public works heavy equipment.
Mr., uh, Pres- President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-three sixty-five dash twenty twenty-four, that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford desires to make improvements and financial investments in several township projects and initiatives in accordance with the allowable spending structure as described by the U.S. Department of Treasury's final rule as follows. And I assume I'm going to read all this equipment?
Yes.
Yes, here we go.
Yeah, but I don't-
One, twenty twenty-four F-six-hundred chassis, four-by-four SD regular cab, one hundred and forty-five inch WB, DRWXL parentheses F-six-L, end close parentheses, in the amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and zero cents under the CoStarz contract number zero-two-five dash E twenty-two dash three-eight-one, Fred Beans Ford of Mechanicsburg, sixty-three twenty, Carlisle Pike, Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, one-seven-zero-five-zero. Were chassis listed above? One, multi-lift XR-five-S dash three-zero-five-zero, hook lift, twelve thousand capacity. One, ten-foot stainless steel dump body. One, twenty-gallon stainless steel valve tank combo. One, stainless steel salt spreader with poly spinner. In an amount, in an amount not to exceed eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents under CoStarz contract number zero-two-five dash E two-two dash four-three-two, Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, four, forty-two-ten Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, seventeen-eleven-one. One, eleven-foot steel flat bed with side pockets mounted in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand five hundred dollars under CoStarz contract, uh, number zero-two-five dash E twenty-two, four-three-two, Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, forty-two-ten Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, seventeen-one-eleven. One, western nine-foot Pro Plus snow plow in an amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars under CoStarz contract number zero-two-five dash E twenty-two dash four-three-two, Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, forty-two-ten Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, seventeen-one-one-one. One, two-ton Falcon asphalt recycler and hot box hook lift in amount not to exceed forty thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents under CoStarz contract number zero-two-five dash E two-two dash four-three-two, Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, forty-two-ten Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, seventeen-one-one-one. One, twenty twenty-four Caterpillar nine-thirty-eight front-end loader in an amount not to exceed two hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and zero cents under CoStarz contract number four-four zero-zero-zero one-four, four-twenty, Follycat Incorporated, eight-five-five Centennial Ave, Biscataway, New Jersey, zero-eight-eight-five-five.
The Scataway.
Oh, thank you.
Wrong.
One, two twenty-four broom bear sweeper on an international cabin chassis in an amount not to exceed four hundred and seven thousand dollars and zero cents under CoStarz contract dash zero-two-five dash E two-two dash four-seven-one, Grand Turk Equipment Company Incorporated, Incorporated? One?
Thirty-one.
Okay, one, all right. Okay. One, two hundred and twenty-four brush bandit, eighteen-inch chipper with winch in an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and zero cents under CoStarz contract four-four zero-zero-zero-two-eight-three-three-nine, SEI Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, forty-two-ten Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, seventeen-one-one-one. Three, Salt Dog Pro fifteen-hundred electric poly hopper spreaders with auger in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars under CoStarz contract four-four zero-zero-zero-two-eight-three-three-nine, SEI Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, forty-two-ten Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, seventeen-one-one-one.
Second.
Impressive.
That was easy for you to say, Mr. Quinn.
Yes, it was, I was proud to say that.
Thank you, Commissioner Forsty Grubb, you get to do it again when we do purchases. Um, so, um, uh, any que- I think, um, I, looking at this agenda, folks, I think we're missing an address for Grand Turk Equipment Incorporated. And, um, it, I would suggest before the meeting ends that we find the, um, uh, the address and read it into the record.
Number one, Schuylkill Parkway Building B, Bridgeport, PA, one-nine-four-zero-five.
There we have it. Excellent, um, any other, uh, any other questions or comments on Resolution Number eighteen? For the record, folks, this is, um, this is a resolution where we are dedicating the use of ARPA funds. Um, these very things will come up again, um, in several minutes when we go through the actual purchases, some of which will be with the, these purchases with the ARPA funds, and others will just be purchases done out of our general budget. I guess our specific budget. Um, any other questions or comments?
I, I, please, after you.
Well, it might, just a general question, are most of these replacements of existing equipment?
The vast majority are replacements of existing equipment.
And what, I don't know, I, it, there's a lot of different equipment, what's the general lifespan or can, that's?
That's a fair question, um, some of these date back, um, fifteen to twenty years. Most of them date back fifteen to twenty years, as I look at the list.
Kind of my question i- is in a similar regard to that. You know, I know that, you know, when we were talking about the open space plan, you know, one of the things was taking an inventory of what we have, uh, especially like playground equipment and coming up with, you know, useful life schedules to be able to better budget and finance these- to be able to better budget and finance these things. You know, right now we're approving what I think to be a rather large order of heavy equipment. Not just a lot of vehicles, but a lot of money and, and, you know, we're fortunate that we have the ability to use ARPA funds for this. I was just curious, do we have in place any kind of a heavy equipment schedule at the township that identifies all of our vehicles and has replacement schedules for them?
Yes, we do, both in finance and insurance, but also at the yard, in the work, in the shop. We have a detailed list of all the equipment, the mileage, the year, the make, the model.
Okay. And in terms of that list, I mean, and I don't, we don't need to go too far down, you know, this conversation, but I'm just curious. When talking about replacement schedules, I'm assuming that we try to time them out so that we don't get hit with, you know, a lot of vehicles all at once, such as we're approving today? Or, I mean.
That's correct.
Or is there another method to it?
No, you're, you're right. That's correct. We try to gradually replace equipment so that we're not hit with a big ticket like this all at once. Of course, this American Rescue Plan Act money comes at a great time and it also has a limited lifespan, so if we don't use it, we will lose it. And so it's important that we do use the funding for things that we need, like this, these vehicles and equipment.
Yep, we're very lucky we got it, yes. All right, that's, those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
Just for the public's perception, I mean, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but there usually is. I mean, it might not be this long, but typically in every year, we're purchasing some equipment for public works in the yard so that, you know, it's spaced out every year. Maybe it's not this list, maybe it's four or five trucks and it's not as noticeable to the person reading it, but this is part of the regular schedule of purchases that we make on an annual basis for public.
Absolutely. You're correct. Every year we include some funding and purchases for heavy equipment and vehicles. We're fortunate to have the funding from the American Rescue Plan Act to purchase more than we normally would. And so we're just taking advantage of that during the time that we're able.
What actually happens to the vehicles that we replace?
Vehicles that we replace will be sold. They have to, we, we'll actually come back to the board for approval to sell these, the vehicles that we're replacing. And so we'll talk through that in about a month and a half. Well, some of this equipment's not going to be here for years, so we'll be back with a lot of equipment that will need your approval to sell.
Thank you.
Also, it's worth noting that at least for one of the purchases, the 2024 F-600 chassis four-by-four. In addition to that, we then, you know, once we buy that chassis, we are buying four additional pieces of equipment that cost $90,000 to outfit that chassis with steel dump body, with stainless steel valve tank combo, with a salt spreader, with a hook lift that's 12,000-pound capacity. We're obviously not going to take 20-year-old equipment and put it on a brand-new chassis, so every once in a while, we're going to see a purchase like this that has a lot of accessories with it, so it's going to take a lot of time to read aloud, but it really constitutes one purchase. Anybody else have anything to offer? Have we beaten this dead horse enough? I, Mr. Berman, will you accept, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grup?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Our next resolution for consideration is Resolution 2366. This is a resolution where we will be announcing a public hearing for zoning, amending Chapter 47, entitled Amusement Devices.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2366, 2024, amending Chapter 47, entitled Amusement Devices, holding a public hearing on March 4th, 2024 at 6:30 PM in the Commissioners' Meeting Room, 1014 Darby Road, Haverton, PA.
Second.
Commissioner?
We have a motion in a second. That is 6:30. What is that, a half hour before our, our work session?
Half hour before the work session. I have a correction. It says Chapter 47, it shows, it's for amusement devices. It should also include Chapter 182 for zoning for significant tobacco retailers.
That was my question, is did this cover the vape and smoke shop?
Both, and when it was typed, it was clearly abbreviated.
So.
Should someone, I think someone should probably make an amendment to include that chapter.
So I'll make an amendment, I'll motion to amend to Resolution Number 2366 of 2024 to include the, I forget the number, but the other chapter of the city code.
Chapter 182.
Chapter 182.
You need to say what for?
Who moved the resolution?
No, I mean, do you need to say it's for tobacco shops?
Significant tobacco shop.
For, for significant tobacco shops.
No.
Well, if we put that in the public hearing, I mean, people won't know what the public hearing is if we don't say it's also for tobacco. Isn't that right?
Significant tobacco.
Yes, I, it, it, there's no problem publicizing this. I'm saying for purposes of our public hearing, we need only indicate that we are holding a public hearing on amending Chapter 47 and amending Chapter 182. We can say as much as we want about them or as little about them, but the, the, the legal requirement is that we indicate to the public that we are considering amending Chapter 47. That chapter is entitled amusement devices and we are amending Chapter 182. That chapter is entitled zoning. Do I have that right, Mr. Walco?
That is correct. Those are the two chapters that are being amended for the purposes.
Can I just ask for the record that we make it clear what this is for the public hearing? So, because I know there's a lot of public interest in it, to mention tobacco, mention convenience stores.
Vape shops, all that.
Vape shops.
Sure.
Commissioner Holmes, if you'd like, I'll just read the preamble to the resolution.
That is a good idea and certainly we can, anybody can, can advertise this in, in any manner that they want. I'm, I'm being particular about this because this is a legal requirement and I don't want us to expand upon our legal requirements and then run the risk of us kind of adding additional legal requirements that we don't need for purposes of, of, of publicizing this. We should all publicize it through our communications to our, our constituents as well as the township publicizing what this will be about. I'm just being.
Right. I just want to be clear that when we do the public announcement, that it's clear what this is. That's all. Not for the legal requirements of what we're voting on.
I agree. Mr. Berman, why don't you go ahead and read the preamble to the resolution into the record?
Whereas the Township of Haverford is considering amendments to the general laws of the Township of Haverford by amending Chapter 47 entitled Amusement Devices to further regulate the premises within which such devices may be permitted and associated definitions. Amending Chapter 182 entitled zoning to clarify the definition of convenience store, to define E liquids, electronic cigarettes, electronic nicotine delivery systems, game of skill machines, hookah bars, indoor recreational and amusement facilities, mechanical amusement devices, significant tobacco retailers and smoke shops, to prohibit mechanical amusement devices within the premises of significant tobacco retailers and to prohibit game of skill machines in convenience stores, to expressly prohibit significant tobacco retailers in the C2 Neighborhood Commercial District, to delete cigarette and tobacco as permitted to be sold in gift shops in the C3 General Commercial District, to establish significant tobacco retailers, including smoke shops, vape shops, and hookah lounges as a permitted use, as a use permitted by conditional use in the C5 Shopping Center Commercial District and to establish the criteria for the approval of a significant tobacco retailer use.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Any other questions or comments on this resolution?
Just to clarify, I made it, so we have a motion in a second. I motioned to amend. Did anyone ever actually second my motion to amend?
I'll second, even though I'm part of the first, first one, I'll second that.
Actually, it's not done that way. The person who moved the, the person who, who moved the amendment has to accept your change?
Accept.
And the person who seconded it has to accept it. So the amendment is accepted to the original motion and the original motion as amended is now before us. Any other questions or comments?
I, I guess, I guess just for a clean slate, anyone who might be watching this and not present, and to kind of dovetail off what Commissioner Cavender said. Basically, we're all aware that the vape shop situation has exploded in the township of late. There's been a lot of desire from the Board of Commissioners and our various constituents to kind of address it and to review its place in our township. And so that the, this, these amendments that we're in the process of discussing and that we'll have a public hearing for on March 4th are specifically to address that situation. And obviously, further information will be available at that public hearing on March 4th, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our solicitor, Mr. Walco, has asked for the floor.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just think it's good for the public just because this is a, I think, a great ordinance that everyone needs to understand and to a little bit understand why this is being done right now and what this ordinance does. Right now, the code has difficulties differentiating between a convenience store and a smoke shop. And that's based upon, someone could come in, have some snacks, have some sodas, then have a lot of cigarette products and then declassified as a convenience store. And you look at it and you say, that's not a convenience store, that's a smoke store. So what this does is that it essentially says, if you hold yourself out as a smoke store, if the most of your inventory is a smoke store, I could forget the percentage, more than we went with 10%, you can have 10% snacks, but the rest were 10% of smokes, then you're a smoke store. And if you're a smoke store, you can't be anywhere except for the C5 Shopping Center and you have to be approved for that use by conditional use. Any smoke stores that are there already, unfortunately, they're grandfathered in and cannot be removed. But if this ordinance passes, another smoke store wouldn't be able to open up in that zoning district. So that's cutting that off right now. As an aside to this, it also addresses games of skill, which you might see popping up in a lot of convenience stores and smoke stores. And essentially says that amusement devices, which includes games of skill, cannot be at convenience stores and smoke stores. So that ranges, these games of skill machines, whether it's arcade games or foosball tables or pool tables, shouldn't have them at convenience stores. You can have them at bars, you can have them at restaurants. But there's no reason to, to hold or attract people who want to play these games to hang out in smoke stores. And it bans it in smoke stores and limits it in convenience stores as well. So that's sort of an aside issue that it addresses. And after this ordinance, if, if impacted, if passed, it really would limit hookah bars, which is again a different use, smoke stores, smoke shops, head shops, to, again, the C5. And there's plenty of definitions that are included to define what is a hookah bar, what is a significant tobacco retailer, what is, you know, a nicotine product and, and the like. So it does a lot. It works with the code as it's written. But it, it, it's aimed at addressing the complaints that this board has been hearing and hopefully curtailing uses that are not desired.
I have a quick thing about, like, if a convenience store or vape, vape shop sells to, instead, that, that of not to close, but they sell or change the ownership. Does that have any, I, I don't.
It's likely they would be able to retain their nonconformity as long as a note, a new certificate of use occupancy wouldn't be required for that use if it, if it was, if it didn't stop, if there wasn't a break in that use.
Okay.
Any, sorry, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Walco, for the clarification. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grup?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is an item that I have been, and suggested to me that we are not prepared to consider this resolution tonight. It does appear on the agenda, so I need to, we need to entertain a motion to remove item 20 from the agenda.
Motion to remove item 20 from the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of removing item 20 from the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, leave the motion carries. You're on to the next item. We are now through resolutions and we are now to board approvals. We have
Two separate.
Two separate approvals for our consideration. First one for our consideration is approval of the Chief of Police Contract Extension.
I move to approve the Chief of Police Contract Extension retroactively from 1420, or 2024 to 1420, or, or 2026.
Second. Hey, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this extension?
Chief, we're thrilled to have you for two, two more, more years.
Yeah, I would join in those comments, just simply stating that I, I'm going to gladly support this motion. Chief, you've done a great job of developing and leading police force like no other and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Chief, if I vote for this, you'll stick around, right?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grup?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item for our agenda is the approval of the Parks, Recreation and Open Space Plan.
Mr. President, motion to approve the Park, Recreation and Open Space Plan.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions or comments? If anybody has for any of us or for our Parks and Rec Director? We appreciate the excellent presentation last week. We also appreciate taking into account Brenner's comments and I, Mr. Berman, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grup?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item on our agenda will be purchases. Number of these will be covered by our previous resolutions. Resolving the use of ARPA funds for these purchases. Some of them, as I said, will not be from the ARPA funds. It is our obligation to go through these contracts individually, so I will entertain the motions.
Mr. President, I would like to motion the purchase of 2024 Ford F-350 regular cab with a nine-foot Western Pro Plus plow in the amount of $66,110.00 under CoStar's contract number 025-E22-387 from Hondrew Ford Monheim, PA. 2024 Ford 350 Supercab with a nine-foot Western Pro Plus plow in the amount of $70,000, $70,060.00 under CoStar's contract number-025-E22-387 from Hondrew Ford, what?
Okay.
Monheim, PA.
No, please go on.
Sorry. 2024 Altec 75-foot tree bucket truck with international cabin chassis in the amount of $299,000 under, $100,000 under CoStar's contract number 4400019945 from Altec Incorporated Plains, PA. 2024 International Cabin Chassis HV607 for recycling truck in the amount of $128,164.40 under CoStar's contract number 025-E22-471 from Grand Turk Equipment Company Incorporated, Bridgeport, PA. 2024 International Cabin Chassis HV607 2024 International Cab and Chassis HV607 for recycling truck in the amount of $128,164. Did I just read that one?
Yes, you did.
$128,164.
Are we getting two of those?
You just read that one.
Yeah, it's repeated, never mind. I'm sorry, it's twice on the copy I'm working from. All right, 2024 recycling body, parentheses, 20-yard, close parentheses for cab and chassis noted above in the amount of $108,373 under CoStar's contract 025-E23-577 from Ascendence Trucks Swedesboro, New Jersey. A pole barn, one, with a concrete pad in the amount of $50,000, CoStar contract number 008-E231096 from Sherk Pole Buildings LLC, East Earl, PA. Public Works Department from?
Let me stop you right there.
Okay, good.
So each, these are, these are broken out into different classifications. So what you have just read is the Public Works Department purchases from our general operating capital fund budgets, started with the 2024 Ford F350, it ended with the pole barn. That is what we should now consider and vote on, and then move to the next topic.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on these, one, two, three, four, five, six contracts, all under Public Works Department from the general operating capital project budgets. Any questions or comments on these? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Now, Commissioner Forstie Grupp, if you're still up for it.
Back to the police?
We're going back to the police, yes. So there were two contracts at the start of that. At the beginning of that, under Police Department, do you see those? You would move those?
Can any of us make the motion?
Sure they can.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of three 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicles and two 2024 electric Chevrolet Blazer police vehicles, one MF26 under CoStar's contract 013E22264 from Whitmoyer Auto Group, 1001 or 1001 East Main Street, Mount Joy, PA, in the amount of $278,800.
Second.
If I just have a question, is there a, will the electric vehicle be used differently than the?
Yes, they will be. They can't be used on a full-time basis because of the charging situation. So Chevrolet just came out with the all-electric police vehicle this year, it's the first model year four, so we're trying it out to see, but it will be used on only, probably on a 12-hour basis.
Thank you.
We also have a second contract under our Police Department.
It looks like it's a second motion.
Okay, motion to authorize the purchase of one 2024 Landmaster AMP Crew 4x4 from Wide World Westchester, PA, in the amount of?
And from the previous resolution, it is $22,801.
$22,801.
Second. We have motions in second for these two police contracts. If, any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next for our consideration is Public Works Department from ARPA funds. This is a motion to authorize the purchase of a lengthy amount of things on the agenda. Who would like it?
I'll read it. Motion to authorize the purchase of one 2024 F600 chassis 4x4 SD regular cab, 145-inch WBDRWXL, parentheses, F6L, close parentheses, in the amount not to exceed $63,335 and zero cents under CoStar's contract number 025-E22-381 from Fred Beans Ford of Mechanicsburg, 6320 Carlisle Pike, Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, 17050. For chassis listed above, one multi-lift XR5S-3050, hook capacity 12,000 capacity, hook lift 12,000 capacity, one 10-foot stainless steel, stainless steel dump body, one 20-gallon stainless steel valve tank combo, one stainless steel salt spreader with poly spinner, in an amount not to exceed $89,500 under CoStar's contract number 025-E22-432 from Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, 4210 Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, 17111. One 11-foot steel flat bed with side pockets mounted in an amount not to exceed $18,500 under CoStar's contract 025-E22432 from Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, 4210 Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, 17111. One Western 9-foot Pro Plus snowplow in an amount not to exceed $8,000 under CoStar's contract 025-E22-432 from Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, 410 Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, 17111. One 2-ton Falcon asphalt recycler and hot box hook lift in an amount not to exceed $40,911 under CoStar's contract number 025-E22432, Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, 4210 Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, 17111. One 2024 Caterpillar 938 front-end loader in an amount not to exceed $281,165 under CoStar's contract number 4400011420 from Follycat Incorporated, 855 Centennial Ave. Is it Scataway?
Scataway.
New Jersey, 08855. One 2024 Broome Bear Sweeper on an international cabin chassis in an amount not to exceed $4700,000 under CoStar's contract 025-E22471 from Grand Turk Equipment Incorporated, Company Incorporated, 1 Skook Hill Parkway, Building B, Bridgeport, PA, 19405. One 2024 brush branded 18-inch chipper with winch in an amount not to exceed $98,715 under CoStar's contract 4400028339 from SEI Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, 410 Chambers Hill Road, Harrisburg, PA, 17111.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second for the Public Works Department purchases from ARPA funds. Any questions or comments? Anybody like that reread?
I want to watch us take delivery on this.
A flag on that one.
Mr. Holmes?
What was that? Yes. What?
Give me one second, please.
I was just checking, I'm sorry to interrupt, I was just tracing to make sure we have approvals for everything. The Salty Dog item, which I'm not sure exactly what that is, but we approved it under the ARPA, so three Salty Dog electric polyhopper spreaders for $14,000. Don't think that's under purchase.
Three Salt Dog electric polyhopper spreaders with auger, that is not in this list of?
We approved it under ARPA purchases, but I don't, unless I'm looking right past it, under purchase.
I don't see the Salty Dog, I didn't read that one. Should we add that?
Okay, so Commissioner Forstie Grupp, will you accept an amendment to your motion in which amendment we will add the purchase of three Salt Dog Pro 1500 electric polyhopper spreaders with auger in an amount not to exceed $14,000 under CoStar's contract 4400028339 of SE, from SEI Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, 4210 Chamber Hill Road, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, 17111?
Yes.
Who seconded this motion?
Yes, I accept.
You accept that amendment as well? All right, we now have a motion as amended for the purchase of all this equipment, including what was just added. Finance Director Cuthbertson, is there any other omissions you spotted in your review or consideration of this?
Just to clarify, there are a couple purchases, for instance, the police cars, they are not being used with ARPA funds, which is why the board didn't see a resolution to use ARPA funds for that. It's in our regular general operating, and we have an EECBG grant from the federal government, Department of Energy, and that's actually what's purchasing the electric vehicle.
Great, so actually, I was going to address that when we finish this motion, and I will turn to you, and you can describe that again. So with regard to the motion of, the motion before us right now, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Thank you. Finance Director Cuthbertson, thank you for those comments. I wanted to address the public. Our motions for those purchases for Public Works were broken out into two different motions, one motion for purchases under our general budget, and one motion for purchases as approved by us for ARPA funds. The police motions had been broken out in that manner, there was two separate motions, one for the purchase of the vehicles, and the second one for the purchase of the ATV. The ATV was specifically addressed in the resolution that we had passed earlier tonight using ARPA funds. As Ms. Cuthbertson has just informed us, the first, the electric vehicle and the vehicles were also subject to, or the funds therefore were taken from a source other than our general funds, so would you describe to all of us where they came from?
The three Chevy Tahos were in the general operating, as we do each year, we always budget for replacement of patrol vehicles. The two electric vehicles, we are using grant monies from the Department of Energy through an EECBG grant program, and that is paying for those two electric vehicles. And then the 4x4 is being used, ARPA funds are being used for that, which is why you saw a resolution for that and the purchase. So you saw the two-step on the 4x4 and only one step on the other, the police department.
Thank you for that clarification. We are now through the purchases, and now for our consideration tonight is board appointments. The first appointment is board members to, board member or members to the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association.
Mr. President, motion to appoint Commissioner Laura Cavender to the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for?
I would like to, I'd like to make an amendment that it say, appoint Commissioner Laura Cavender to the Board of Directors of the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association. I do think that's an important distinction.
Accepted.
Can I recommend a further amendment? That it would be the person designated to be, to fill the vacancies, so really what we're doing here is we're appointing someone to be the nomination or the designation of the board, be proposed for the Board of Directors of the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association.
So this is Havreford Township's appointment to the Board of Directors of the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association?
Correct, the nomination would be the word, but nomination or point.
Before we vote, Solicitor Walco, could you talk a little bit about that process once the board is assembled?
Yes, so the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association is an independent nonprofit entity that has a charter from 1943 and associated bylaws that provides for a five-person Board of Directors, and that names five peoples initially, back when it was first formed, but provides language that if those persons are not there, or vacancy arises, that the Board of Directors is nominated by one person selected by Havreford Township, the other person by Lower Merion Township, the other person by Havreford School District, and then one person who would be designated by the original donor, H. Gates Lloyds, and one by the Bryn Mawr Horse Show Association. The charter goes on to say that if those persons or entities are no longer in existence, remaining directors would replace those vacancies, one if they become vacant. I think that will eventually be necessary for the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association to do, so I'd recommend that there be five people to take any action on the Playfield Association. So with those five persons that form the Board of Directors, the one space is through a nomination or a person that is nominated by the Havreford Township, so this would be the person that Havreford Township is nominating to be elected to fill that vacancy in that spot for the association.
Thank you.
Is there a term on this position?
There is not, according to the charter. Before we vote, I don't believe before Mr. Walco started giving his explanation that his recommended amendment was actually made by a commissioner and then seconded, so just for process purposes.
Want me to make it again? Or, oh, Walco's wasn't?
Well, I think you should make it.
Okay. So the amendment to the motion is that appointing Commissioner Cavender to the Board of Directors of the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association?
To be the person nominated to fill the vacancy.
The person to be nominated to fill the vacancy.
For the role for that designated by the Commissioners of Havreford Township.
As designated by the Commissioners of Havreford Township.
I accept the amendment.
Okay, thanks.
You seconded it?
Very good.
I accept it.
Okay, we have a motion as amended, proposed and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Laura Cavender?
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Laura Cavender.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Laura Cavender.
Commissioner Cavender?
Laura Cavender.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Laura Cavender.
Commissioner McCollum?
Laura Cavender.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Laura Cavender.
Commissioner Holmes?
Commissioner Cavender. Thank you, Commissioner Cavender, for serving as our representative on this Bryn Mawr Playfield Association. I'm sure you will serve with dignity and honor. Next for our consideration, the Civil Service Commission, this is the alternate position. It is for us to appoint someone to fill an unexpired six-year term, which will expire on December 31st, 2028.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Monet Riley to fill an unexpired six-year term to expire December 31st, 2028.
Second.
Motion in a second, any other?
No closed nominations?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Charles Stevenson to fill the unexpired six-year term to expire December 31st, 2028.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for Mr. Stevenson, a motion in a second for Ms. Riley, any other motions for this appointment?
Motion to close nominations? Second.
We have a motion to close nominations in a second, all in favor of closing nominations? Any opposed? Motions are closed, before us is the motion to appoint? Before us is the motion to appoint either Ms. Riley or Mr. Stevenson to the unexpired six-year term of our Civil Service Commission alternate. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak?
Charles Stevenson.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Monet Riley.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Monet Riley.
Commissioner Cavender?
Monet Riley.
Commissioner Quinn?
Mr. Stevenson?
Commissioner Hart?
Monet Riley.
Commissioner McCollum?
Charles Stevenson.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Monet Riley.
Commissioner Holmes?
Ms. Riley. Thank you, Ms. Riley, for serving. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, for your candidacy. Next for our consideration is Friends of the Grange.
Yes, I'd like to make a mo- motion to appoint, well, Andrea, while Daniels, to fill an unexpired two-year term to expire December 31.
Second.
I love you, pal, you're gonna have to give me that again. The name.
Oh, well, Daniel, thanks. Thanks, Larry.
Andrea Daniels?
Andrea.
Andrea Daniels, excellent. Anybody else for this, any other consideration for this motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to close and a second, all in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, for our consideration is the appointment of Andrea Daniels for Friends of the Grange to fill an unexpired term, which will expire this December 31, 2024. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Andrea Daniels?
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Andrea Daniels.
Commissioner McCloskey? Commissioner Trombetta? I'm sorry, going down the list here. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Ms. Daniels.
Commissioner McCollum?
Andrea Daniels.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Andrea Daniels.
Commissioner Holmes?
Ms. Daniels. Thank you, Ms. Daniels, for your willingness to serve. We look forward to it. Senior Citizens Advisory Board, sixth ward only, I will punt that again, but report back to the board as soon as I have.
As the head of the senior citizens in board now, I don't know how I got that, but uh, but.
I know how you got it.
But they, well, they, well, they asked, they asked me that the six ward needs to appoint, point out, so I will.
You have, you have done your duty, Commissioner Quinn, I will, I will do this quickly.
All right, cool.
My appointee, who I would have reappointed is, has, has asked not to serve, so I'm going to fill that slot. Next for our consideration is the Vacancy Committee. We're considering a motion to appoint someone to serve on the Vacancy Committee for a one-year term, which will expire this December 31, 2024.
I move to appoint Kevin McNicholas to serve on the Vacancy Committee for a one-year term to expire on December 31.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Kevin McNicholas to serve on the Vacancy Committee. Any other motions?
Motion to close?
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second, all in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, nominations are closed. Before us is the motion to appoint Kevin McNicholas to the Vacancy Committee. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Kevin McNicholas.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Mr. McNicholas.
Commissioner Cavender?
I'm going abstain.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Kevin McNicholas.
Commissioner McCollum?
Kevin McNicholas.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Kevin McNicholas.
Commissioner Holmes?
Kevin McNicholas. Is it Nicholas or Nichols?
McNicholas.
Kevin McNicholas. Thank you, Mr. McNicholas, and thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Finally, for our consideration, the Vacant Property Review Committee. We have a motion to appoint someone to fill a spot for a five-year term that will expire at the end of 2028. Do we have a motion?
Is this the one there, one of us has to serve, serve on? Is that that one, or?
I think. Review Committee does have, consists of one of our officers, I think one of our zoning officers.
Thought you, you were on one of them. Is that the one that you're on?
You looking at me or somebody else?
I thought you were on this one. Is this the same, same one I'm thinking of?
This is the Vacant Property Review Board that works with the County Department of Redevelopment.
Okay, I thought that was one of us.
There is a position for a commissioner to sit on that board, but we do need a resident as well. We need the board to appoint someone.
We also have, and we also have one of our officers.
There is staff on the.
Staff on it as well.
On the committee as well.
There's one civilian spot.
I believe that is correct.
Mr. President, let's make a motion to table this until we have a candidate.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to table and a second, all in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Any opposed? The nomination is tabled, so we have a candidate, or candidates. Next on our agenda, the continuation of the Citizens Forum for non-agenda items. Does anybody here who would like to speak on any matter? Step forward and the floor is yours. Anybody here on my left? Mr. Hall?
Good evening, Todd Hall, Second Ward. Lot of equipment on the schedule tonight. I think the only thing we missed was the family truckster with optional rally fun pack from the original Vacation movie, but I was, I'm here tonight to speak about an email I received from the township, I'm in receipt of it. It's from an employee that includes an auto signature proclaiming their pronouns and a Native American land acknowledgement, and I bring my concerns and request for removal of this going forward to the township at this opportunity. The email was sent from a Havreford Township server in the context and duties of Havreford Township business, so this is not an issue about the free expression of an individual. It's a concern about the message being sent from Havreford Township to its constituents and others. In the theory of Colin Wright, citing my sources here, the declaration of pronouns is done in accordance with a gender activist mindset, correlating with the belief of there being different societal roles and expectations for people based on their sex. And if we're all to be treated the same regardless of sex, then why is the proclamation of someone's proclamation of their belief in gender identity necessary? Beyond these concerns, to take a step back, when corresponding with the township, there's not unsolicited information automatically sent by a township employee proclaiming their marital or family status, their financial status, their sexual orientation, their religious beliefs, their race identity, their health status, or their political affiliation. So therefore, why would the township allow someone to automatically include an all emails regardless of asked their gender identity? I do appreciate the diversity in the township of the above categories. If someone has a different view of mind on the concept of gender, gender identity, that's fine, but what I don't accept is the need for someone to proclaim their belief during official Havreford Township business on, on a different topic. Usually, it would not be acceptable for an employee to write an expression of their personal beliefs in the six categories I mentioned above. And then a native land acknowledgement was also included stating, "I acknowledge and honor indigenous people throughout North America, particularly the Lenape people, past, present, and future, on whose land I live and work." From Chapter 19 of Township of Havreford Code, employees are bound to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Pennsylvania. The documents express that Havreford Township is in Pennsylvania, United States of America, not in Lenape Indian Territory. Why is it acceptable for an employee to advise otherwise? Once again, if they have certain viewpoints on colonialism or Native American culture, that's fine, they're free to have that, but I don't understand why it's communicated in official township business and context. So I ask the township to review this, keep email communication to the subject matter at hand, and I ask the communication from the township reflect the accurate position of the township. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Anybody else to the, to my left? Not that Mr. Hall is to my left. Anybody to the right? Yes, please come up.
Hi, my name is Michael Lee, I've been a resident of Havreford Township for over 30 years now.
Welcome, Mr. Lee.
Pardon me?
Welcome.
Thank you very much. And I wanted to talk to you about a couple of things on the agenda, particularly from the viewpoint of inclusivity and communication and transparency. Now, we have, at the beginning of the meeting, we heard again that you are doing a work session to discuss legal and real estate matters. My question as a resident is, is this something that will impact the quality of life of residents in the township? And will you be trying to get their input before any decision is made? Obviously, I don't know what you're talking about because it's a secret session, or a, you know, it just includes you guys. The second thing is about the March 4th public hearing. I went to the Planning Commission meeting the other night, and what I found out was that what's pushing this is concerns by parents about things like vaping and games at chance and things like that. What the proposal is, is to take this problem, or if it is a problem, from the entire township and include it in only the C5 districts. C5 is either no shopping center, or we call the quarry development, which is, you know, Lowe's and things like that. So my question is, having a public hearing is great, but I'm concerned about people finding out about it. For instance, I signed up on the township page for just about everything you could get. I haven't seen anything since beginning in November, you know, that little link that you have. So I went back and signed up again, still haven't seen anything. So I'm wondering, see, public hearings don't matter unless everybody who's infected is aware of it. So that's my, they're my concerns, basically.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I will, let me address the issue about meeting an executive session. To the extent that the township ultimately takes any official action, it takes official action in public. So if we were to say that we are in executive session discussing an issue of, let's say, that involves real estate, we might be meeting to talk about potentially buying real estate and then talking about prices and things like that, which we would never publish ahead of time, just so that we didn't put ourselves at a disadvantage while we were trying to negotiate for something. We talk at times in executive session about potential litigation or disputes that the township has, either it faces claims from somebody, or it's potentially making a claim against somebody. But at numerous meetings, I trust, if you've seen them, anytime that we end up settling a piece of litigation, or buying a property, or selling a property, ultimately, the contract appears before the public, settlement agreement will be, will be presented to the public, and we take public votes on them. But certain topics by state law, we're allowed to discuss preliminary discussions or discussions involving things such as tactics or strategy, or negotiation prices and things, obviously in order not to disadvantage us in, in dealing across the aisle with, with somebody. But we can take no official action in executive session. We still have to come out here to the public, say that we are settling a tax dispute, let's say, an assessment dispute with somebody, or that we are purchasing property, for instance, the property across the street from the library. All those negotiations and all of our reports from our attorneys and those communications will happen in executive session, but when we ultimately come to a deal, the deal is then exposed to the public, and then we, we do act at that point. So to the extent that that gives people the misimpression that we are acting backstage, I just want to assure you that just at times, we're being informed of things, or we're helping our agents, or our officers, or our attorneys craft their tactics and negotiation plans, or ultimately what might be, you know, a purchase price that we consider for the purchase or sale of, of future assets. So, but thank you for raising that, and I'm happy to explain that, and explain that in public. As far as the information about, about upcoming events, I trust that the proper people will hear for concern about not having been included in township-wide communications, and I will do my best to address that. And so, thank you again for your comments. Did you want to come forward? Yes, ma'am.
Met Wagner, Rosewood Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening. I won the lottery, the shade tree lottery. It was suggested when I picked up my tree that I should thank the commissioners. So thank you for having this program, but I also think that I need to thank Havreford citizens, who I'm imagining tax dollars paid for my tree.
You're welcome.
Okay, but I don't know if that's how it all happened or not, but.
So it's a combination of volunteers who helped plant those trees and pick those trees, as well as township funds that go toward the purchase of the trees. I myself was a beneficiary of one of those trees years ago, and it's now grown.
I now have two. So I have no more room, so I won't be applying next year. But my issue that I'm concerned about, that I would hope that you are too, is the communication problem. Everyone that I told about the shade tree lottery seemed to get a tree, so therefore, I'm a great asset to your communications. I saw it in that brochure that you put out, but people that I spoke to had no idea that there was a shade tree lottery, so I just want to throw that out there. I also went to the Planning Commission meeting, and I heard about the municipal exemption being considered by the commissioners, sent back to the Planning Commission for their input, and I quote, "The Planning Commission purpose, the acting is an advisory group to the Board of Commissioners." So when the Planning Commission said that the wording of the municipal exemption was ambiguous, and they needed to meet with the commissioner, who was the liaison, oh, by the way, they didn't know who that was, they were sending it back to you guys. And then they would discuss it at their next meeting, which was February 1, and, oh, surprise, surprise, it wasn't on their agenda. Although, they said that there was a 30-day window that needed to be responded in order to pass the municipal exemption. So it wasn't discussed, and I guess they advised you that it was ambiguous and needs clarification, but I don't know that for a fact. So I watched your work session to see if there was anything about this on YouTube, and there was no mention of the municipal exemption. Also, there was no mention of the comprehensive plan. I keep on coming back to that because I have no idea what's going on with that. There was no mention of Havreford Road Diet, also one of my goodies. There was no mention of billboards. I know there's something about billboards going on in the, in the township, and now I'm imagining that Bryn Mawr Fields is the polo field, although I haven't heard anything about what's going on with the polo field in months. So what is going on in Havreford Township? I sure as golly don't know, and I'm a taxpaying citizen who is very interested in knowing what's going on. Something is amiss. Is it communication, or is this working for you? But to end on a positive note, thank you again for my tree.
And thank you for your comments, and you're most welcome for the tree. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Off the top of my head, I can't recall everything that you just raised, but let me just address a couple of them that are coming to mind. There is not before us yet a municipal exemption for the zoning board for us to consider. It would be in a, it would be in a work session first discussed. It would also have to be, I believe, the subject of a public hearing, because it would be a change to our zoning law. Am I correct about that, Mr. Walco? So there are a number of things that would have to happen publicly before the So there are a number of things that would have to happen publicly before the board could adopt such an exception. The planning commission has, I believe, reported back to the board its opinions on that. It may not have, so I don't mean to say that, but there are, we will be getting feedback from municipal, from the planning commission as well as inviting feedback from the public if we take it up. It is not currently on our agenda and is something the board is considering whether or not to take up. It is something that other townships around us, it is a power other townships around us have exercised to exempt themselves from zoning requirements, the idea being that the board is already a policymaking body in the township and therefore is as empowered as the zoning board would be to make those kinds of decisions. There are other townships who do not enjoy that exemption from the zoning board and it is certainly not something at this point that the board is prepared to, you know, unanimously act on one way or the other. So it is under consideration and a number of things have to happen in the public before it could be taken up and become law. The comprehensive plan, you have not heard anything on the comprehensive plan recently. There was obviously a great deal of information synthesized from public input that was done by our planning commission. Our planning commission provided us with a great deal of feedback and we are still in the process of sifting through that feedback, analyzing that feedback and redrafting the plan for consideration again to the public. So that's where that is. And I apologize for the silence on that issue. I know you mentioned others and, oh, Bryn Mawr Playfield Association addressed earlier, that is a body that governs the disposition of that land and that body will be reconfigured and then that body will take up and consider the transfer of that land to the township. And that's one of, that's part of the entire polo field analysis and negotiation that's been going on for the last year. And is there any other topic I missed? The road diet. That is, a number of commissioners and a number of members of the public have provided feedback back to PennDOT, I think. Are we still waiting for something else from PennDOT on that?
Yeah, the road diet is a PennDOT project, as you know. So we have provided feedback to PennDOT and we've had some conversations with them. When we're ready for next steps, which should be soon, we'll communicate that to the public and make sure to do a better job getting it out to you because I understand your concerns.
Billboards remain a issue, a litigated issue between the billboard owners and the township and our ordinance is at, is under consideration and our zoning board's decision not to allow billboards is under, you know, consideration in the courts right now. So that case continues to be litigated. And so that is the status of that matter. Hope to report back to folks as things, you know, happen in that case. But as of right now, it is, it is active litigation between us and the, between the township of Havaford and a number of citizens who joined that township and the billboard, I don't say manufacturers, the billboard company. And that is in front of the, that is back in front of the Court of Common Pleas after being sent back down by the appeals court and the Court of Common Pleas is considering several issues in front of it right now. Did I cover everything? You certainly come up and ask me anything else after the meeting if you'd like and I gladly tell you and anybody who asks. Thank you. Anybody else who has anything else for our citizens forum? Being none, we move now to new business. Do any of my colleagues have any new business to bring before the board tonight?
I don't necessarily know if it's new business as much as I think it's something that I probably should have read at the work session, but kind of dovetailing off of some of the comments that were just made. The ordinance committee did meet on January 30th of 2024 and for clarification of those in attendance and those watching, the ordinance committee is a subcommittee of the board of commissioners that has four commissioners that sit on it. And we, at that committee meeting, we did begin a review of the limited municipal exemption ordinance and the tobacco and amusement devices ordinances that have been brought up at various points today. And I can tell you that during that, the way it works is we review it, we discuss it, we propose, you know, kind of our changes and so on, and then at some point, sometimes things just end, but sometimes they move forward and they come to the full board where they would be fully, you know, available to the public and the full board would vote on it. And I can tell you that in our, in our meeting, the input that was provided by the planning commission was taken into consideration with regards to at least the, with regard to the limited exemption ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondik. Anybody else have anything to offer in new business? Hearing none, we can move to other business.
I guess it's me again. So just a couple of updates, you know, one is as we, you know, celebrate Black History Month, I would just kind, I take a moment to kind of think back on while we, you know, reside in the greatest country on the planet, in my humble opinion, it's not a perfect country and there are still things that can be done to improve our society, to make it friendlier, more inclusive. And so I think it's incumbent upon all of us to try to respect others and, you know, move forward in that kind of a direction. For those of you who indulge in Valentine's Day, it's this week, Happy Saint Valentine's Day. The weather tomorrow is, I can't tell whether it's supposed to be bad or not. It seems that every time I check, it bounces back and forth, but just a reiteration to try to keep the cars off the street and to allow the plows to do their job. As far as announcements go, the Westgate Hills Civic Association is having their annual Easter event on Saturday, March 23rd at 1:00 PM. If you like more details, they normally will post highlights on their Facebook page and their email lists as we get closer to the events, but just put that on your calendar. It's a great event, very family-friendly, lots of fun. Then the only other thing I will just kind of throw out there has to do with a very serious police incident that occurred in our neighboring, one of our neighboring townships. I was about to say Upper Darby, but I think it technically happened in East Lansdowne. And, but our police officers responded to it along with numerous police officers from around the county and unfortunately there were numerous people hurt, including two police officers. And I think it's important to just pay some respects, you know, to our first responders who, you know, put their lives on the line. This was obviously a very challenging situation and it's unfortunate that any lives were lost, but it sounds like it could have been a lot worse if not for the professionalism and the dedication of the first responders that responded to it. That's it. Have a good month.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondik. Commissioner Forstie-Grubb.
Just like to remind everyone that our local volunteer fire departments are doing their annual drive and so they protect us every day from fires and other mishaps. So I hope that you consider donating to your local fire company. I would also like to say that in February, we do designate that month as Black History Month, but I think this designation is more of a reminder to bring to the forefront to think about all the ways that African-Americans have contributed to our culture, our science, our technology, our invention, the richness of our lives, not just in February, but every month. And I would say that one of the, one of the things that I'm reminded of is Chimamanda Adichie had this great talk that I show pretty regularly to my students called "The Dangers of a Single Story," in which she reminds us that our lives are composed of many overlapping stories. And that also reminds me of something that Amanda Gorman said in her poem that she read at the inauguration in 2021. She had a couple of lines that she said, "It's because being America is more than a pride we inherit. It's the past we step into and how we repair it." And that's why there's so many different ways to look at our country and to look at the people who are currently in it and I'm open to everyone's story and I'm eager to always learn more from others. So thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie-Grubb. Mr. McCloskey.
Sure. Briefly, Havaford Township's Business Revitalization and Modernization Matching Gift Grant Program is due, the applications are due this Friday, February 16th. So just a reminder, anybody that wants to get an application in for that grant program, we've talked about it a couple of times at previous meetings and I know it's been publicized on township social media and emails and certainly on Commissioner Cavender's email list, which is very informative. But if you wanted to get an application in, it's February 16th, 2024. There's an in-person workshop on March 2nd for rain gardens. Get information, email havafreengarden@gmail.com. And then I just wanted to touch briefly, in the last month, I've had a lot of terrific conversations with residents and I'm not talking, I don't want to talk about vape shops. We have a public hearing set for March 4th, 2024 that we talked about at this meeting. But there is, it led to a lot of great discussions about the state of retail shops and retail space and commercial space and the need in Havaford Township for thriving commercial space in 2024 that is an ever-changing market with, you know, you and all of your neighbors getting 10 Amazon packages every week. The market is not the same as it was 20 years ago, 10 years ago, or probably even five years ago. And there's a reality of that in terms of stores that are in the market for commercial development in our area and certainly in the size of parcels that exist in many areas of Havaford Township where the properties are already built out and they're owned by out-of-town landlords. And there's certain realities of that in terms of the development of these properties that abut our existing residential areas. And I think it's, it's easy for all of us to say that we want business development and that we want a greater economic boom from commercial, commercial tax base in Havaford Township, but then when that rubber sort of hits the road with the reality of a store that may not be ideal for us, and again, this is not about vape shops, we're having a hearing about it, I'm gonna vote for the ordinance, I'm all for it. But if you just look back in the last, I've been here eight years, right? And I'll take a business that no longer exists, right? Just take Town Tap. Like, people liked Town Tap as a restaurant, but when that first came in, there was an uproar from certain residents and some neighbors and fear and it burdened itself with gossip rumor and traffic. I literally had a person, a resident, tell me that they heard that there were going to be trashcans with fire pits and they were going to be drinking around a trashcan with a fire pit around it. And it's just unhealthy. And it's just unhealthy. And I'm talking about business that doesn't exist anymore, right? But there's also, but there has not been a development in the third ward on Darby Road or Eagle Road that was new or different in the last eight years that I've been here that has not met some sort of resistance. And the reality is when you tell residents that there's resistance to some of these places, they don't understand why and there's nobody who's coming out to say, you know what, I support this restaurant going in or I support this store going in or, you know, I really think this development is good or I like that bank or I like that nail salon. But the reality is it has to start somewhere. So I just encourage, and in these conversations I have, people have great ideas. And there happens to be an undeveloped plot of land at the corner of Eagle and Darby that eventually something is gonna go in and I know that there's gonna be 50% of the people who are freaking out because they don't want whatever's going in there. But I promise you it'll be okay and I promise you that if we find some common ground to talk about these things rather than reverting to fear and gossip, that it'll be better for our business development and it'll be better for our town and it'll be better for those strips on Eagle and Darby Road. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Mr. Cavender.
Thank you. Spring is right around the corner and with it, there's some great spring activities being planned throughout Ward 5. The Brynford Civic Association's annual spring fling is scheduled for Saturday, April 6th, and they are currently looking for volunteers to help organize, donate and help at the event. If you'd like to volunteer, please reach out to info@brynfordsivic.org. This is also the season for 5K races and walks for a good cause throughout the township. I encourage everyone to be active and get involved. Tonight, I would like to use some of my time to make a comment on a different issue, one that is weighing heavily on my mind. Right now, there are 300,000 people in northern Gaza at immediate risk of famine due to a lack of humanitarian aid. In Gaza, after 16 weeks of bombing and attacks, there have been 28,000 people killed, most of these civilians, more than 12,000 people of those killed have been children. All civilians, in fact, all people, have a right to protection during conflict under international humanitarian law. All civilians, in fact, all people, have a right to the provision of humanitarian assistance during war. All parties involved in the conflict should be required to allow, facilitate and enable the delivery of humanitarian assistance to civilians in Gaza. There's simply no way to ignore the immeasurable suffering happening in the Middle East right now. We are all humans and we share a collective humanity. We should not ignore the collective trauma being experienced by millions of people throughout Gaza and in Israel. I'm speaking now with my conscience and my heart and I encourage all of us to do the same. There are peaceful solutions to this humanitarian disaster and they require a meaningful dialogue and action by all parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Commissioner Quinn.
Yes, thank you. And last week, we, to touch on what some others have said, we saw that horrific event that took place in East Lansdowne and we saw our police and we saw our five, 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 fire crews all go, go, all run towards that. And as Jack said on, on another news, they ran towards a fire so we could all be, be safe. And those guys that were hurt that day, they woke up, left their wives and kids to go do a job and not, not knowing what that day would be, be, would be like. So I would like to remember every police officer who gets up every day and protects us and thank them for all their work and also for the five, five, fire, I think, I think as Terry said, that the dude drives and, and all these guys all work for free and they run out of their homes at all hours of the night. So remember them too, when you, if, if you can give more, one buck, five bucks, 10, 10 bucks, well, just anything, it works. So thank, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Yes, one announcement, the Penfield Civic Association is sponsoring a happy hour at J.D. McGillicuddy's, February 22nd, starts at 6 o'clock. Quizzle will follow at 8. And I just want to take, in honor of Black History Month and President's Day, read a little bit of the poem that Commissioner Forstie-Grubb mentioned before, "The Hill We Climb" by Amanda Gorman. "In this truth, in this faith, we trust, for while we have our eyes on the future, history has its eyes on us. This is the era of just redemption we feared in its inception. We did not feel prepared to be the heirs of such a terror." We did not feel prepared to be the heirs of such a terrifying hour, but within it we found the power to author a new chapter, offer hope and laughter to ourselves. So while once we asked how can we possibly prevail over catastrophe, now we assert how could catastrophe possibly prevail over us? We will not march back to what was, but move to what shall be. A country that is bruised but whole, benevolent but bold, fierce and free, we will not be turned around or interrupted by intimidation because we know our inaction and inertia will be the inheritance of the next generation. Our blunders become their burden. But one thing is certain, if we merge mercy with might and might with right, then love becomes our legacy and change our children's birthright." This was written, the poem was part of, um, Biden's inauguration weeks after January 6th. It was an expression of hope in a very dark time. Today's 215 years anniversary of Lincoln's birth, who, um, presided over one of the darkest times in our country's history, and I think we need more of these expressions of hope, and we are certainly in a somewhat dark time at the present. So I am.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Mr. McCollum.
I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank, uh, the public work staff and the director, Dan Mariani, for the work they did last month, the challenging snow and ice. You know, it wasn't easy, we hadn't had any storms in a few years, I'm sure there were some hurdles, they got through it, and a good point to point out with that is our trash and recycles were picked up without it, but they didn't skip a beat. Second thing I'd like to do is formally welcome home ninth ward resident and East Lansdowne police officer, Rob Mann. Rob lives here with his family, and I'm glad to see that he came home the other day with a nice parade from the hospital, well deserved. Um, and lastly, the, all the talk that we've had lately about the, uh, the vape shops and smoke shops, I had the opportunity to attend a hearing, uh, I believe it was about 10 days ago. One of the special operations officers here in the township, uh, gave me a call and asked me if I wouldn't mind coming in and taking a look and watching what's going on. So they are fighting to prevent, um, sales to minors. Uh, there was two businesses cited that day. One has sold to youths or minors under 18 three times, so they were fined. There's another, uh, individual store that was fined for selling to minors twice. So there, the, the fight's ongoing, we're just trying to tighten it up a little further with this legislation. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCollum. Commissioner Trumbetta.
Mr. President, thank you. Commissioner McCloskey stole my thunder, um, so I'll just be brief and, uh, reiterate that applications are due this Friday, February 16th at 4:00 PM for the Havford Township Business Revitalization and Modernization Matching Grant Program. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Trumbetta, and, and thank you all for, uh, everything you all said. I, um, I was going to say nothing tonight, um, because we, we had a long meeting. Mr. Hall, I won't lie to you, you inspired me. I guess I don't have a comment on the land issue, I don't, I don't, um, I, I don't know enough about it appearing on someone's email, um, and haven't paid enough attention to it, perhaps shame on me. But as far as the use of pronouns go, let me, let me understand you, let me, let me explain to the public why they are on my signature, um, at my office, and I don't have a signature line on my, on my township email, but if I did, I would put them there. I've been in politics far too long to care what people call me, uh, what moniker they use, what pronoun they use, what expletive they use, what four-letter, five-letter, or eight-letter word they use to describe me. But if a township employee here puts pronouns on their signature line on their township page, um, they are telling the person on the other side of that email that that township person respects what that other person wants to be called and wants to be, uh, how they want to be thought of and how they want to be regarded. And right now in our society, there's this terrible infection, um, of, of, of imposing all of society's ills and villainy on some of the most vulnerable people we have in our society right now, which is people going through the issues of, of transitioning. And the idea that somebody can just let somebody know right at the outset with a simple three-word thing that says he, him, or she, her, or they, it, um, tell somebody that I'll respect what you're going through, and I will respect how you want to be referred to. I would say that is an employee that I would treasure, uh, as opposed to discipline. So, um, as I get to, um, as a member of this board, I get to speak last, so, um, I just, um, I answer your comments, uh, about, uh, the issue of pronouns with those comments, and, um, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Were adjourned.